Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Ready to go? Hey, think we're ready to go. I'm gonna call this meeting to order of the Operations Committee. First thing we have is approval of the minutes from Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I got a first and a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Or say nay. That is approved. New business, City Logo Wear by Jim David.
Good morning, Jim David. We'll start with the most exciting item on the agenda up front. So, this is, uh, following each election or reelection of a council member, there's an opportunity to have a hundred dollar per diem to purchase a city council shirt. So, in discussions with staff and with, uh, with leadership, there was a discussion that maybe we need to change the amount, provide an opportunity for also council, or, excuse me, council staff to also participate in purchasing city logo wear, so to speak. So, right now, on this chart, you'll see it's a hundred dollars, uh, every two years. Staff is kind of uncertain. I don't, uh, we may have had a couple of staff that have purchased shirts in the past. The proposal in front of you is maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, each year, uh, for city council members, uh, to purchase a city shirt. I mean, there's, there's long sleeve, there's short sleeve, there's T-shirts, uh, there's various options available, and then we would private, provide a hundred dollars every two years, uh, for city council staff, uh, to purchase a shirt. Uh, one of the changes that the city has made is providing an online store where you can go on inside and you can select different options. Uh, the options that are available right now, um, will change or will be even more options, uh, in coming months. And so, the other proposal would be that this would take place in the fall or towards the end of the year, uh, that an email would go out to council members, letting them know that the opportunity exists for them to go in, and then they would be allowed a maximum, maybe it's a hundred and fifty dollars. If they exceed that amount, they would be responsible for paying for whatever, uh, however amount they do exceed. Um, so that's kind of the idea, bringing it forward to the Operations Committee. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jim. Questions, Mr. Jensen?
Mr. David, uh, tell me the rationale just between the difference in the counselors', um, you know, proposed one hundred to one fifty and the staff only getting up, uh, you know, to a hundred. Why aren't those the same?
Yeah, and that's, that's your discretion. I thought, uh, uh, from a humble standpoint of view, we don't have any money at zero, and so getting to a hundred is quite a bit, and so I thought we'd start with a hundred. Uh, but if it's the decision of this committee that we move forward with, the same as council, I mean, we would, of course, be fine with that. Uh, but we thought we would start at a lower amount for staff and then provide more for, uh, uh, for council members. So, that's your discretion.
Counselor Silver?
Thank you. Um, now, I haven't heard, I think we've talked about this a little bit, but I know when I first got elected, it was, I think, a hundred bucks, and then you went to A and B, or where was it, that you could?
Yeah, it was Brown and Sanger.
Brown and Sanger.
Actually, and I, I, I'm not sure what they're called today, uh, what their, their new name is. Uh, right now, with the online store, they are not, as far as I know, participating. It's through Monarch Sales. Uh, but from the information I've been told is that their, uh, their options will be added to the online store at a later date. Um, so right now, if you go to the online store, you do have quite a bit of options, but there will be even more opportunities coming online here soon.
And it's like current policy, I still have a hundred dollars to spend from two years ago, and now another hundred, 'cause it's another two years?
Yeah, it's, what, really, it's when you're elected, and then you're, when you're reelected, so, every four years. But the budget would be impacted every two years. So.
Were you trying to accumulate yours for a parka or something?
A wardrobe. Thank you.
Counselor Neitzler?
Uh, just, their new name is Innovations. Um, I have been a proponent for this for a while. I actually would be strongly in favor of turning this around. Um, we're part-time counselors. You work every day. You're gonna wear out your logo wear a lot faster. You're a full-time employee. Uh, I, I see no reason why you should be every two years and have less than we do. I'm, I wouldn't get hung up on dollar amounts, but I feel really strongly staff should have at least as much, if not more, than city counselors. So, at the very least, they should be in parity when it comes to the number of years. And I, I'd be, as a counselor, I'm, I'd be okay with a small stipend, o- only each time I'm elected, or every couple of years, whoever. I, I, I'm not gonna get hung up on amounts, but I think staff needs to be in parity at the very least.
Thank you.
I'd agree with that.
Any other discussion? Jim, what's our next step?
Right now, it's just what the, in the past, we have not gotten this, we have never gone forward to the Operations Committee. This was just a decision that was made by leadership, but I think just to make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, we're coming before the Operations Committee. So, if it's a decision, I, I think there's a consensus of the committee that the council and the staff would be the same. My thought would be is just leave it, eh, a hundred and fifty annually. It doesn't mean that somebody has to do it on an annual basis, but at least it allows that opportunity. People's sizes change, they lose weight, um, you know, their, their washer machine maybe messes up their shirt. Um, so, just allowing the opportunity here. I think there's a sense of pride, too, working for the city of Sioux Falls and to being a member of the city council. Um, and so, if, if it's a, if the committee is, uh, okay with it, we will move forward with a hundred and fifty dollars annually for city council and for city council staff.
Counselor Silver?
Yeah, I'd be, I'm on board with that. Counselor Neitzler, did you use this allowance for your license plate?
I, I did not. I, that was a personal expense. Um, uh, it, just real quick, is our budget analyst, this is obviously, if you add it all up, I'm not gonna do the math in my head, probably pretty, pretty small, but the budget analyst is good where we're at in the budget with, even with this proposal. Okay, I just wanna make sure that this could be absorbed. So, we don't need a clothing line item or anything necessarily. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, council committees by Christine Erickson. Christine, thank you.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'll be brief. Um, this is, we've had a lot of conversation over the years about, start the clock. We've had a few conversations over the years as far as utilizing our committees in a more effective, uh, manner. Uh, we do see the need for committees from time to time, and so, in front of you, you will see, um, ordinance thirty point zero zero for standing committees of the city council. Uh, this should be in your packet in front of you. Uh, the change that I am bringing to you to discuss amongst yourselves, um, and either the committee can then request to bring it forward, or I would be happy to partner with, uh, one of you to do this. Uh, I will read what it says. Um, it says, "The city council may assign or refer any policy question to a council committee for its study, consideration, and/or recommendation. A committee cannot convene a meeting unless three or more of its members are present. All agendas for the city council committee meetings shall be posted with at least twenty-four hours' notice. The reason for the three or more is just in the name of transparency. We wanna make sure we have the most representation on those committees there as possible, but we also want to honor that life happens and that someone may not be able to attend, but we want to make sure that we're being accommodating to everyone's schedules." Um, nothing in our ordinance or policy manual says they have to meet at two, uh, on a Tuesday, and as we see our informational meetings kind of going longer, sometimes executive session, we're kind of pressed for time. And so, moving these committees to, um, meet when needed, uh, examples could be such as, the chicken ordinance was one that had an extra study. Um, there were other items, um, such as taxis, um, land use for annexation, and so, this would be an opportunity to kick those to the committees to allow them to study, kind of like a summer study, if you will, and just kind of an ad hoc committee, but it would be, uh, assigned by the council, um, to go to those committees. So, everyone would know what was going on, and it wouldn't just be a rogue committee, so to speak. So, that's the potential change that I'm bringing in front of you, and, uh, I'm not married to this change. If you've got suggestions or, uh, anything like that, happy to collaborate and listen and whatever.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzler?
This is something I've also been interested in. Uh, the last sentence, I, I take it, you're putting this in here because, by definition, the council committees are less than a quorum, so by law, there's not a twenty-four hour notice required 'cause it's not a meeting of a public, of a quorum of a body, but just to be transparent, you just wanna be?
Yep, we want, we want to have-
Say that we are gonna do that.
Right, we are going to impose that on ourselves because we want to make sure that we're giving ample notice to the public. So, if they want to come, these meetings are held in public. Uh, we also want them noticed because the committees do meet in public that, uh, while there only may be four people on a committee, uh, if I wanna come to, to land use, I have the right to come to land use and be a, a part in the audience and listen in to those, and so, that would be the intent. We wanna have a higher standard than that minimum.
Which, which should be noted that I believe we've been doing that for years, but this would just bind it in ordinance.
Correct.
And, and, um, do you know if anywhere it's written down that land use is on the X week of the month?
No, it's not. Oh, maybe it is. We, we do have a, Tom, maybe he wants to speak to that, 'cause we do say the third week is public services, the second week is land use.
Do we write that anywhere down? Is that tradition?
It used to be in the policy manual, but, uh, council took it out and put it in the reference manual, so it's not a policy anymore.
Right, so we've just really done a lot of this by tradition, and so, this would, um, put it into ordinance and say, "This is how we're going to operate going forward," so everyone's on the same page.
So, you, you, you would propose that we don't have a standing week and there isn't a set time? It would just be whenever it's necessary, we would s- call a meeting and we would notice it, and if it works for the committee to do it at four o'clock on Wednesday, that's appropriate?
Much like operations.
Okay.
That's what you do for operations.
Okay.
Other questions?
Counselor Silver, did we have a committee meeting last year?
I don't think we did. I don't, I don't think we've had a committee meeting for a very, very long time. We've really changed the way we do it where almost everything comes to informational meetings, um, and so, they're really, we really haven't utilized them, uh, but we've had, you were on the land, um, the annexation task force. Um, so, we've had additional ad hoc committees, but not actual, these standing committees for that.
Yeah, it seems to kind of really have fallen by the wayside, so whatever. If this helps engage it or get it used again, that would certainly be nice.
And so, what it does is it allows it to still be there to have that avenue and that structure in place without saying, "Well, who's on it? Well, I wanna be on it. Well, what about me?" And, and it's not jockeying for those positions, so to speak. It's just those standing committees are there, the council gets to decide, uh, where they go, and, um, that, that tradition can still live on, but we also have the structure in place that we all know the expectations as council, as well as, you know, every week, Tom is, um, sending out, "Oh, land use is canceled, public service is canceled. Let's just do away with the busy work."
Thank you.
So, I guess what I would ask, Mr. Chair, if I could, is, um, whether you, as a committee, wanna discuss it further and, and, um, take next steps, or if you want to give me the blessing and one of you would like to, uh, sign on and bring it forward, uh, we can do that as well. And so, I guess I will leave that in your hands as far as, uh, what you prefer.
Anybody wanna carry it?
It's got my blessing. I don't need, necessarily need to sign onto it, but.
If, if no other hands are raised, I'd be happy to. I, but.
We'll get it in writing and, um, we'll get something moving forward. It's really not a earth-shattering change. I mean, it is a big change, but I think it's, it's good government.
Well, certainly you have to, uh, sometimes make the rules adapt as time goes on. Things, some things become obsolete and other things need to move forward. I still have a rotary phone, but I don't use it. So, I just thought I'd say that. Anybody else? Janet, would you like to speak? Counselor Brecky? Come on up and speak to this.
Thank you, members of the committee. Um, yeah, I'd like to speak to the same item. I sent you all an email, and, you know, you know, basically, in the email, I said, "I agree with this change. Um, I think it's a good compromise." I've been pushing for a long time to just get rid of, rid of them, but I like this idea, number one, because getting rid of them, they're all throughout the ordinance, so it'd be this massive ordinance change to find all the places that it's men- mentioned. But this is, I think, a great idea because it allows them to, to just sit dormant, but be there in place for, like, an annexation issue, for something that you could dump, you know, into it if you had a, a big issue that it needed to gear up and, and run and take care of. So, and then you don't have, it really would require a far less, you know, very simple amendment as opposed to trying to strike it out of there. Um, and I, I, part of the reason I'm a proponent of it is because I didn't like the way they functioned anyway, because, um, the way they were being utilized, it ended up that people on the committees had information that the full council didn't have, so it would then come to the, a meeting, and all these questions would be asked all over again because you had four people that knew what was going on and four people that didn't. So, I think expanding the scope of the informational meeting has worked very well where we kind of always, you know, we're kind of all getting the same information. And, and this would, again, free up that time slot and just, you know, so that we could continue to let that to happen a little bit. Um, the other thing is, I did want, I'd like to see it be taken one step further in the discussions that we've had on this. You know, we've talked about, you know, and I, and I've raised the issue, and we've talked about, um, you know, the mayor's directors' meetings, and, you know, why is it that we're briefed at the mayor's directors' meetings and we're only, you know, doing it with four people there, which, you know, that has this rotation, and again, you've got the situation where some people come to the meeting with more information than others, and it doesn't, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, and now that I've been here for a while, um, and it, it, it won't take you very long, but I think, you know, initially, it's, it's hard to just, it's like the garden hose thing, you know, but once you're here for even a little while, the red notes that we were getting, I mean, really, that's all you need to kind of prep for the meeting. That, that's enough to get you calling and asking, you know, directors or whatever if you need more information, or calling your fellow council members. So, um, the mayor's meetings really don't give you that much more information. And so, what I'd like to see us do is, now that we've got this augmented agenda coming in, that that just really serves as our briefing document, and then, you know, um, just add, like, a mayor's report to the, you know, to the informational meeting right after public discussion, and then, eh, you know, a variety of people could do that. It could be, nobody could give one that day, or if the council chair and vice chair had something that the mayor wanted him, them to report to us on, because they're meeting with them more regularly, they could report to us on it. Um, or the mayor could come, or his designee could come, or the chief of staff could come, or, you know, in cer- certain weeks, if a slow week, you know, nobody would come. And so, I think we've got a little more time because if we don't have these, you know, committee spots kind of just taking up that time, and I don't think, I don't see this as being a long thing, but it would also allow, you know, like, if at the direct, you know, his own director's meeting, it comes up that there's some sort of issue, or after we get the agenda, you can hear some issue bubbling, them to come and step in and give us a little extra m- information, you know, right before the meeting, um, what I call emerging issues or hot button issues, you know, in that time slot. And so, I did send my email to the mayor's office and ask, you know, what, you know, I said, "We've been talking about this, Mayor. What's your interest in it?" And I'm, just wanna read you what I got back from Erica, um, for your consideration, but I, I think they're, they're open to discussion on it. Come on. Counselor, good morning, and thank you for your email. I appreciate your suggestions regarding the mayor's scheduled agenda briefings. We will take those into consideration moving forward as the mayor's briefing continues to evolve. In addition, given the frequency of correspondence being provided by our office and our directors through email, I do not see informational briefings occurring on a regular basis, but as needed from our office or our team. As we do now, we will determine when that is warranted moving forward and schedule time on the informational agenda through the city clerk. As we move forward, should you need more information in order to make decisions on policy-related actions, do not hesitate to let me know. We're continuing eval- continually evaluating our communication to ensure it is hitting the mark, and we are certainly open to suggestions. If you have any questions on this, do not hesitate to let me know. So, at the current, the current, I think that, you know, Kurt, you might have some, you know, additional feedback. You had some discussions with Erica. I think currently, they could see this working where you don't need to have it, you know, actually an item on the agenda, um, and you, and that they would just put themselves on the informational agenda. They would, Erica was doing that for a while. She was regularly briefing us, and then that kind of stopped. I think we all indicated that we enjoyed that. Um, but if you, if you go the route, you know, I'm suggesting we take a look at, um, eh, adding a, a mayor's report, again, that would allow the opportunity for council chair and vice chair to give us a little more information, too, or, or even our own, uh, you know, or, or just some, some other designee from the mayor's office. And again, I don't see it as necessitating a report each time, but, you know, just like open discussion, sometimes you have it, sometimes you don't. So, just raise that, those issues for an additional discussion, you know, as a part of, a part of this discussion.
Thank you. Anything else on committees? All right, I think somebody would be carrying that forward for your coun- work on it, Counselor Erickson. Next, consent agenda. Christine Erickson.
All right, here we go again. Um, this item here, um, really, the focus has been transpar- transparency employing, um, contracts and, uh, an amendment that would happen to the procedures manual, so this is, um, not something I'm asking for in ordinance or that would, uh, go, um, you would decide, and then it would, obviously, th- those amendments would be, to the procedures manual would be taken to the full city council to vote on, uh, should there be additional ones. So, this is all in regards to the pulling of contracts and really just adding transparency for all of us to that. If there needs to be an administration representation at the city council meeting, counselors must notify the budget analyst by email no later than twelve o'clock, the day prior to the council consideration. For the most part, this deadline will occur on Mondays. If the counselor fails to adhere to this deadline, the administration is under no obligation to be present. This really goes down to the respect of time for everyone. Um, this should be the goal and the intent. However, we know things come up and sometimes there's new information. That's why it would go in the procedures manual and not an ordinance, um, because we don't wanna tie the hands. The budget analyst will then notify the full council when he or she is informed that a, an item is being pulled from the consent agenda. Any written responses from the administrat- the administration should include all counselors and city council staff. The response will also be added to the online agenda. This goes along, again, with the changes that, uh, we voted on as a council uh, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, when we're dealing with kind of that explanation. And truly, the intent is, is to make sure that goes on the agenda, gives notification to the public, gives notification to us, and it also gives notification to the directors, so they know, should they or a designee be present for that, uh, it allows them time to, if my kid has a, a choir concert and I can't make it, I can allow someone within my department to then come and, and be present. Um, the other thing that I think, uh, on top of that, and this isn't on my, my notes, but the other thing that is, sometimes things are pulled because maybe I just wanna vote no, or maybe I just wanna talk about the item because it's a good deal and I just want, I want that conversation to take place and highlight it. I think we also need to be mindful of that, that if written notification can be provided by the administration, we should also allow that, that that said counselor could present that, read it, and, and share what the administration has to say about that item, instead of sitting in, in the audience for two hours, um, just waiting their turn to speak, being away, and I know it's their job, and I know they do it willingly, but again, it's about the respect of time, the information, uh, for us to provide to the public, I think is also beneficial in that, that, uh, if we're not forcing people to sit back here, uh, when budget times are tight as well. So, um, just some suggestions as far as the procedures manual, and really just making sure that we're providing notification to the public as well as to all council and really providing that transparency, um, to those items that are being pulled. So, uh, I'd ask for your feedback, and again, next steps would percent, potentially be, uh, an amendment to the procedures manual. Happy to answer any questions. Done.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzler?
This has been something I've been passionate about for a long time, too, and I've talked to some city staff about it. I, um, I've considered this something about treating people the way, the way that you'd wanna be treated and just a simple matter of respect. Um, city staff should be available, but we literally, there's been times where you have somebody who's had, on their wedding anniversary, comes at seven o'clock and sits here, and then there's public input for thirty minutes, and they're here for an hour, and then, because they were told that somebody might pull something from the consent agenda, and then they go home, or it's their kid's birthday, or whatever it may be, and that it's so disrespectful. And then there's other times in which something just gets pulled and they ask for city staff, and then they're chastised 'cause they're not there. I do want you to also remember that we do have hourly employees on city staff, and if they come and they sit at a meeting and they're here for an hour, and then they walk out for the one minute that they were here to explain something that easily could have been explained with the, the email that was already sent, they get paid that hourly rate. I know it's their job, I get it, but they're also working full-time, all day. Eh, so, just a matter of trying to just give proper notice. The other thing, too, is that then it also gives other counselors a heads-up so they can be prepared because some things can get pulled, which means we're gonna be voting on it separately, and maybe there's something very germane that's really important to know, that it's not just a simple consent agenda, that's something really simple. There might be something somewhat controversial, and you're not on notice about it 'cause you haven't been in the loop, and then suddenly it gets pulled, and then you're asked to vote on something that was something that you had no materials for, that somebody else was privy to. So, I, I think it's a, a really good thing. I love that you're not tying the hands, though, 'cause there are going to be moments, and you know that, where something comes that you did not know about until three hours before the meeting, and it really is gonna need to get pulled. So, you don't wanna bind the hands of us, and you don't wanna bind the hands of, and I would, obviously, I would assume that, uh, a good administration, if something comes up, they're gonna get somebody there. If it's something where there's something that urgent that, uh, you know, came up and it's, you weren't trying to put somebody on the spot, it's just that maybe something came up in the media or a citizen raised attention to an issue, and you had no idea. But I think it's a, just a good policy to try to live by, and it would just be something that everybody would just understand. Just a good practice. How about that? So.
Thank you. Counselor Silver?
Haven't we had, like, a standing request for something like this for quite a while, where we've told people, "Please let people know," and whatever? Are they not doing that, or just remind me?
We, we have had that in the past. Um, it's never been in the procedures manual, and so, this really just takes it to that next step to say, "This is expected of you. This is just not a, a request anymore. This is how we will operate as a council," and so, that we're all on the same page as well. Um, it does streamline, and I do want you to know, I have talked to our budget analyst about this, uh, and so, he is aware of this because this does add a little bit on his plate as far as saying, "Hey, you've gotta notify the full council uh, when an item is being pulled," and it can be as simple as Counselor Erickson's requesting to pull item one, two, three, four. Easy peasy, so it doesn't add a lot. Um, but it just, again, it puts us all on the same page as far as, if we're gonna vote on it, we should probably know it's being pulled, and it also gives us that opportunity to have the additional information added all, onto, uh, the online agenda as well. So, it's also notification and transparency for the public as well.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? I'll just make a couple of, go ahead, Counselor Neitzler, you have more?
I just thought, so, nothing in here precludes anybody, me, from individually reaching out to the staff and just asking a direct question about it, and they might, I might just say, "Okay, great, that's fine," and.
Absolutely. There's times where I may say, "What is this? Why, why is this for this? Didn't we already do this?" Or why, you know, whatever. Um, anybody can obviously make any calls that they want to, and you can choose to pull it from that time, uh, or not, and we do, we just wanna minimize the amount of last-minute polls. Uh, it's out of respect for, for staff as well as for our fellow counselors, because, you know, if I'm pulling something last minute and surprising it on you, I don't think that's fair either, and then expecting you to form your opinion to vote on it, because we do vote on those things separately instead of one big motion. Um, but there are times, too, where I might just wanna pull some, I know Counselor Stagers used to always pull something, and, and he did not ever request staff to be here. He wanted to vote no, and so, he would say, "I'm pulling items, this item and this item," and, and there would be no staff here. He says, "No, I'm just pulling it 'cause I don't like it. I'm gonna vote no," and then onward we'd go. Um, and so, there are those times, too, but again, then there's times where, "Hey, I wanna pull the triage item because it means something to me. I've been involved in it, and I wanna talk about it." Great. If I wanna talk about it, that gives me the opportunity to talk about it, and I might not need staff here, um, because it's really not that I have questions, I just maybe wanna make a statement or a point. And if that's the case, that also gives the opportunity to the administration to provide documentation to us, and I can read Director Franken's memo and say, "Okay, here's what it is," versus her, again, sitting here and, and taking that much time. We have opportunity to make statements all the time, and so, we just wanna be mindful of that.
And the only, to finish up, if that's okay, the only, um, it needs to be noted that counselors always have the right to pull something.
Always.
It would not be precluded. It's just that there would be, um, if I just pu- decide to pull something, for whatever reason, a very legitimate reason potentially on the fly, there just isn't the obligation that administration is, needs to have somebody there because they weren't noticed.
Right, but I will say, in, in the previous administration and this administration, even when they have been last minute, they do try to be here as much as they can, and so, it just, we just wanna give them that respect and, and fair notification as well as the public. It just adds that extra layer of, of transparency to it.
Many times, an administration knows if something is, might be controversial, and they'll proactively have somebody there.
Correct, but oftentimes, I don't ever know what's being pulled unless I'm pulling it myself, and that's the standard that we need to create amongst ourselves to know that Counselor Neitzler, you're pulling something. I think we all deserve to know because we're voting on it. It's in the public. Do the business in the public.
Thanks.
I just have a couple of observations on this. First off, I, I, I'm happy that it's being put in a- First off, I, I'm happy that it's being put in a, will be considered to put into policy procedures manual because as councillor Jensen has found out, as you start, this is what you study so you know what to, what to do and to work on that. If it's common practice and you're new on a council, you might not have known that. So it's good to put in there. Secondly, to councillor Neitz's points that some of the city administration people are on hourly wage, I think that it reminds me that I need to pull more things the closer it gets to Christmas because of the overtime situation. Moving on, council reports. Rick Kylie, Rick is not here, understand he has solicited advice and, and has a stand in that there is no equal to, so we're going to go right now to Tom.
And is it okay that I talk from here?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is an item that has been brought up by councillor Kylie several times over the past few years. And really what it speaks to is the idea of whether or not we hold or have basically open discussion on our agendas for the informational and even committee meetings. And you'll notice that we do have open discussion on here. And his proposal, which is a good proposal, and I'll explain why in a moment, is to change that from open discussion to something like councillor reports or councillor comments. The intent being so that open discussion does not become a venue during a meeting to discuss in depth an item that should otherwise be noticed to the public and, you know, properly allotted time for during a meeting in particular. And I'll just kind of share some stats with you to let you know kind of the impetus for this. The council does, you know, engage in open discussion frequently and very often it is comments. But on the average, if the council is going to have open discussion and these are real numbers, the average is about eight minutes. Over the course of the last four years, they spend on open discussion. But open discussion has actually ranged from zero, there are many meetings where you don't have open discussion, up until, up to about 40 minutes, 45 minutes. So open discussion has gone very lengthy. And when it's gone lengthy, generally it's been on specific topics and a, you know, what would be considered a true dialogue, which is not a bad thing. You know, in some of the examples, you know, the street vacations that were pending have been talked about during open discussion, transparency ordinances, things like that, you know, oftentimes hot button issues. The point here is to avoid engaging in and dialoguing in a, what would otherwise be an agenda item so that number one, you don't run into any open meetings issues, but also just so that there is proper notice, have the right people here to be able to talk about particular items. And again, it also speaks to time management because I talked about open discussion ranging from zero to 45 minutes. You know, if you're engaging in an in-depth discussion, we could put that on an agenda, which is very easy to do, a lot that time and just better manage the time during an informational meeting or a committee meeting. So the proposal here is just by way of the policy manual, just a blurb in there that basically outlines that will, you know, basically the, the order of business for informational and committee agendas to include a period for councillor comments or reports, whatever. I, I think we have reports on this particular agenda, but probably councillor comments would be more appropriate that wouldn't prohibit the council from say, asking the rest of the council, you know, would, you know, say, you know, would you be averse to including X item on a future agenda or whatever? It doesn't eliminate dialogue, but the whole intent is to get away from discussing items that would otherwise be noticed as an agenda item on the committee or informational meeting agenda.
Does councillor Kylie plan to bring forth the wording to put that in the procedures or?
Yes, and the, the procedure, basically it would just be, you know, councillor, it would just address councillor reports and I, councillor reports or councillor comments at these meetings and, you know, I anticipate it being a sentence or two sentences, just directing that. And it's, and also the point there being that the council can, you know, vote on it as well, just like they would with the other amendment to the policy manual so that there's complete buy-in, but just basically a sentence saying, we're not using the term open discussion, we're discouraging a dialogue on items that should otherwise be noticed.
Okay. Questions? Councillor Neitz.
I, I do have a question. I, I should mention that it, I don't think it's, it's a big deal because this is a little more of an informal meeting, but we should probably circle back at some point to the consent agenda and item and at least come to a consensus and maybe even there's a motion to move forward with recommending a change to the operations manual. We could discuss that maybe in open discussion. Is the proposal that the, that the line item, open discussion would go away and be replaced with this new verbiage?
Correct.
And I guess I'm just trying to grasp, so is there going to be some sort of boundaries that would be set? These are the things that you should talk about or that is a word change?
No, I think it's a word change and it may seem like it's semantics, but really it's, what's, is being discouraged is discussing items that should otherwise be noticed. You know, if we have an item called councillor reports or councillor comments, typically councillors will share, you know, some of the good things they've done over the previous weeks or items that are going on in the city. But when you transition to discussing policy topics and getting into the merits of policies, that's where you would want to kind of draw the line. And this has come up before and the point has always been made, well, it's called open discussion. So it stands to reason that you would change it. And it would just be something like most things on our agendas that the council would police by themselves. And if they see something, you know, veering into the direction of discussing what should otherwise be an agenda item, you know, just a, a simple reminder that, hey, we could put this on a future informational or a future committee meeting or city council meeting.
So the word change plus a little blurb in the manual would just kind of give everybody just a little direction that the appropriate use for this is to talk about, for example, something that has, it's not a pending action, anything. I went to a ribbon cutting last week and I'd just like to share that and, and kind of steer you away from saying, you know, in two weeks, there's going to be a rezoning on the agenda and suddenly now we're, without noticing it, we're having a pre-hearing on a pending action.
Exactly.
So it's, it's just to give us a little bit more. Okay. So like I said, it, it sounds like semantics, but it's really to try to give us direction and kind of keep us in the bounds of making sure that we're complying with open meetings laws.
Right. And the other component that I mentioned is just disciplining the agenda itself so that the council can remain on track and, you know, not extend the meeting beyond what it should be.
Okay. Well, I, I guess it'd be interesting to see what the verbiage looks like and based on that, we could potentially make a decision.
Councillor Jensen.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question in regards to that. So for an example, we have open discussion on the meeting here later. And if you didn't get something in on time or you want to inform your body of what you're going to kind of be bringing to the body in the future, which will then be a policy issue. So now if, if this goes through and we, the council accepts it, can I not inform my colleagues what I'm going to be doing, bringing forward something? Kind of like, for an example, in our 4 o'clock meeting, the informational, we'll have a, someone come in and talk about the, the police training facility, police and fire training facility. Then we'll have a vote in the, in the first meeting at the first reading and then a second vote in the, in the final reading of that. So what you're saying is like even at the informational meeting at 4 o'clock, even though we're going to, that's a policy issue, that type of stuff shouldn't happen in that informational meeting? That's what I'm trying to kind of play here is I'm going to bring something forward here in about two minutes or three minutes whenever we get to the open discussions. It will be to inform my colleagues and ask for help and insight and then it will be a policy discussion at some point and be voted on by the council. So we're going to have like 14 meetings on this deal. So.
I mean, that's precisely how, that's precisely the intent is that you, you use your councillor comments to inform and, you know, solicit feedback too, you know? Would anybody be, you know, completely opposed to me bringing this forward or whatever the case may be? But the idea is, you know, let's just say city logo wear was not on the agenda today for you to start talking about city logo wear and kind of feeling out the committee and coming to some kind of decision or discussing the merits of whether or not people should get $100, $150 every year, every two years. But instead, you know, I think at the next operations committee meeting, we should address logo wear.
Bingo. Got it.
Councillor Neitz.
So if I could, I'm, I guess I, I don't have it. So at the, at the, at this newly titled item, would it be appropriate for me to say, okay, so this is not on any, there's no pending action, it's just an idea that I have in my head. I say, I'm thinking about bringing an ordinance forward to make potbelly pigs illegal in the city of Sioux Falls. That's appropriate?
Yes.
But is it appropriate for another councillor to chime in and, and then for a dialogue to start? Is that, is that where the line is that we're trying to prevent?
The intent is to avoid having a discussion about whether or not there should be, what was your example?
The merits of it.
The merits of it. And I, I think, you know, and what councillor Kylie has pointed out in the past is that when the council moves in that direction during an informational meeting or even a committee meeting, put the brakes on it just for notice, for preparation, et cetera, just take it and move it to be an item on a future informational agenda.
So it's really, it should be more of a one way. I mean, it's okay to say, but once you start, everybody starts debating and it's now almost become a de facto agenda item that should have been noticed. Okay. So that's the line you're trying to draw.
Right. And it's, it's not always going to be an extraordinarily clear line, but again, some of the examples that I gave, you know, talking about street vacations, et cetera, those, those are fairly clear lines.
Okay. Fair enough.
Anything else? Thank you. Tom, along with Rick. Last item, well, not the last item, item E under New Business National Citizen Survey. Dave Bixler, please.
Dave Bixler, budget analyst for the city council. Just want to talk about the 2021 National Citizen Survey. A little history on the citizen survey, it's prepared and customized in even number of years and conducted in subsequent year. The cost of the survey is about $25,000, $5,000 in the first year to prepare and customize. And then in the second year is 20,000 and that's to conduct the mailings and the compilation of results. Over the, on a slide, I have the history of the number of respondents over the years. 3,000 surveys are sent out each year when the surveys are conducted. Here's a timeline. I apologize, it's kind of small, but really in October, November is when the time, the council will have to have the customization done for the survey. And so I just wanted to get that in front of the operations committee so we could start talking about that. As far as customization here, some examples of what was added is to the last survey, nothing was deleted, just things were added and those are highlighted in yellow. Then the next steps, do we begin the preparation of the 2021 survey? And the councillors that were involved in preparing the survey in 2018 were councillor Erickson, Starr, Sale and Neitzert. So I look for your guidance going forward.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Neitz.
Does, there was some discussion about this, I think partly, well, I know because of COVID and, and budgetary, thinking about whether we should just as a take one for the team item earlier in the year, just delay it for a year? Is that one of the directions you're looking for? Do you want to just do it at the cadence we normally would, which is now, or wait a year? Or what, what do you ask them for?
I would look to see if we are going to start it now and just to stay on the same cadence that we have in the past versus skipping a year due to the COVID.
Can, and I apologize if, if you just said this, but could you, could you remind us of the, the expenditures are different each two years because one year there's surveys and one year there's just a compilation of the data in the report, what the cost would be this year and then next year?
This year would be $5,000 and the next year would be $20,000 with all the mailings. That's what drives up the cost and the compilation of the results.
Given the rather small cost, what, what would you have any argument for delaying it?
I don't think, I don't see an argument to delay it. I think it would be, I think it would be best to go forward.
And is that largely what you're looking for is just a blessing from this committee to go forward or don't? I mean, that's what you're just looking for?
That's what I'm looking for and also which councillors would be on the group to customize the questions.
And maybe one last thing. So can you remind us, because not everybody is familiar with this, how many questions generally are there and how many are we even allowed to customize? Because the vast majority are all the same between every city.
There's about, I think about 30 to 40 questions. And so there are some that, like in this case, you can customize these where you can add things in. That isn't that big of a deal, but then if you have open-ended questions, those are the customization where we only have one that we can do.
That's right. And we struggled the most, I think with, if you could only ask one question, what would you ask? Okay. Well, I'll just say, I'm, I'm very, I think we should go forward, keep with the same cadence. And as far as who's going to be on it, I, you know, I think having a diverse group of opinions, maybe new people, I don't have a dog in that hunt for the example. I'm not necessarily saying you, but.
Thank you. Councillor Soberg.
So it's, did you say again, budget wise, it's what, 5,000 this year and 20 next year? What's the difference? Why is it? What did I miss?
5,000 this year is to get the process started and then we will do the customization of the questions and work back and forth with the National Citizen Survey. And then next year, it'll be $20,000 and that's mainly driven up due to the mailings. You send out 3,000 mailings and then you have follow-up mailings when they're conducting the survey. But we have no, we're not involved with that at all. It's all done randomly by the survey company.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'd agree that we should move forward. Can these questions be tailored at all with current events? I mean, is there questions you put in there with COVID and somehow or another?
You could, like in this example here, you can add some things into these different questions. You can't change the actual question of what 15 reads, but you can add items in the selection category.
Interesting.
And then you have one open-ended question that gets to be asked.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? I just have a couple of, oh, go ahead councillor.
I'm sorry, I would only just in addition, share that the value of this is not just one survey in isolation, it's over time because then you can start to notice trends. So it's good to just kind of keep it up because you see if things are, you know, if people's opinions of roads are staying the same or if it's been declining, then it starts to raise some red flags. So it's cumulative as well.
Thank you councillor Neitz. And to dovetail on that, I don't think it, you cannot make an informed decision without data. And the cumulative data that you put together throughout the years on this is invaluable to us when we make policy decisions. And I think it's a good thing and I am going to encourage you to go ahead with it on that. Secondly, last, a couple of ones that I looked at failed to address the need for curling. So I would suggest that you put that in the questions, whether that's priority one or two for people. I'm sure it'll be right up there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we move to the part where it is now currently called open discussion. Councillors? Councillor Jensen?
Well, I just have maybe some councillor reports to give here during the open discussion. But one thing that I've just kind of, as I've gotten onto the council and started to just see how things are accomplished as a council and as a body and, and the things that we value and the public certainly values. One thing I'd like to kind of take the lead on if, you know, this committee would allow me to and we can bring other councillors in, bring the public in, too, is looking at the city council meeting policies, timing. in, bring the public in, two is looking at the city council meeting policies, timing, what we take first on an agenda, whether it be all the business that is on the meeting agenda for the night, and then public input, the time in which the council meets. And then, you know, the, like I was kind of talking about in our conversation on counselor reports, is looking at the informational meeting, and what is being spoken to us, or the, the staff is informing us that, in that informational meeting, and kind of how that kind of goes throughout the, the chain. It goes to the informational meeting, then it comes to the first reading where there's also public input, and then it comes to the, the second reading of it. So, sometimes, we're briefed on a very, you know, easy topic, three or four times before we, we vote on it, and the public is informed those three times. So, I think that there could be some potential overlap and redundancy, that we can create efficiencies in, in our council and for the public, so they don't get confused on, well, what is the first reading, and what is the second reading? Because I think that some people could get confused by that. But if this committee would, you know, maybe just help me kind of figure out how we go about doing this, and put it as an agenda item, maybe new business next time, I think it's just showing a little open and transparency about, you know, what, what I want to accomplish, and what I think we can accomplish and make this even better than it is already. Thank you.
Other open discussion? Counselor Knightzert?
And I, I would support that, if, get it on the agenda and start the public discussion, that'd be great. I don't know if maybe staff or anybody wants to answer this, whether they believe that any sort of motion is necessary on the consent agenda item, or if it's just simply a matter of just taking the ball and running with it and coming up with the draft? Because it's just going to be an amendment to our...
If the committee...
How would you like to do, do that?
Mr. Chair, if the committee does take action, which there, which has been done, there's precedent, that the committee may recommend approval to the full city council, because in the end, the procedures manual is adopted by the full city council. You have that within your authority. Before making a decision, though, I'd ask that, you know, do public input for that in case there's anybody that wants to speak to it. But in the past, if there has been a procedures amend, or procedures manual amendment, it has been this committee's prerogative to have that motion made to recommend approval.
Okay. Did we have, I'm just looking through my notes here. Did we have, make sure I have the right one, do we have a, a draft that we would be voting on, or is this a, or, or would we be, or would we just essentially be asking you to move forward? Because I think we've done that before, where we've just given direction to staff to just take it and write something up for consideration for the full city council. That's in spirit with, with what we see.
Correct. Because this has not gone before our communications, it has not gone before the city attorney's office. So, we, we want to follow those steps before it goes to the city, before it goes to the full city council. So, that, you're well within your right to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Counselor Jensen?
I think much like the, the shirts and the logowear, I think the, the best thing for us to do would just give direction to Mr. David and our staff to do exactly what he just said. I don't think we need to vote on anything here to make that happen, because we'll do that in the regular city council meeting. But if they have the operation committee to recommend they move forward, that's what they can do.
I, I think we've maybe done it both ways. I, I don't know that there's a issue with it, a legal issue or anything, but I'm just...
If I could just chime in for a second. Based on the feedback that I've heard at our meeting, when these things come forward in front of the full city council, I will speak as the operations chair, saying that we had a hearing on this, or had a meeting on this, and there was no opposition, because some questions to be cleaned up, but we don't have any opposition. We're going to be voting on it again as a full council.
And we, we also don't have a draft that we're voting on, but, yeah, okay.
So, I, I think we just move forward that way.
Okay.
Other open discussion? I'll just chime in a couple, to comment on Counselor Breckie's discussion about what's coming forward from the administration and the Friday morning meetings, the Friday morning agenda meetings or the mayor's meetings, we've, we've talked to him about that. We're invited to that. I think with the new format coming forward with the agendas that we will be provided, your point exactly is that some of the red notes and the things like that are going to go away. I, I project that the Friday morning agenda meetings that the mayor has are probably, the relevance of those will go away in a hurry. And I have talked to the administration about coming back to the informational meetings on a semi-regular or as-needed basis to inform us on things that are going on. So, they're going to do that, I believe. They're going to do that as needed. It probably doesn't make any sense to them to come and waste an afternoon if there's nothing that they need to tell us. So, going forward, I believe that it's a change in the way we're going to get our information, but I think it's a positive change, as you pointed out too. So, those are the only comments I have. Seeing nothing else, we're in public comment. Anybody wants us to address things on the agenda today, please come forward. Seeing none? The adjournment, anybody?
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of adjournment, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, say nay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.